...circle which is close to County Road 319. And I'm a runner, so I'm pretty much out on the road there. And I'm seeing multiple issues on 307 and 319. One is speeding. There's a lot of speeding around there. It's more than once that I have to jump in the grass. Other thing is DUI, open container littering, whatever you call it. So many outdoor containers out there, and then they get shredded by the moors. So you have sharp objects there also. But there's a steep increase in the Apple Kansas machine here. Just thrown out the side of the road. Theft of street signs, Sheriff, I think you're aware of that. Street signs just get stolen. And dumping of dogs. That's one thing that concerns me a lot. So speeding, I believe, is purely a thing the sheriff is working on. DUI, open container littering, I think that's a thing that has to be addressed by multiple entities, because there's no sign around there warning people that there's a fine on it, and so on and so forth. And obviously, it's not enforced at all. The other thing is dumping the dogs, which is a... People may see that's just old people throw out the box. They come from the city in the evenings, they throw them out. But it is a high stress on the community at the moment, because it's too much, it's too heavy. There are multiple issues there also. One is roadside. The last dog I found was eighty-eight pounds. Hidden that in the night by a car, and this dog was on the road. This is high damage on vehicle and threatening life. And you could discuss, yeah, that happens with deer also. There's a difference. Somebody dumping a dog there and liberally risking life of other people. Then public health, we have no idea about those dogs. They may be sick, they may be not. You may be bitten, they may be aggressive, we have no idea. The other thing is, it's plainly a violation of Texas Penal Court. So clear it. It has to be looked at. And as I said, it's a high emotional stress on community. All the shelters are full up to the north of San Antonio. It's absolutely no place for dogs anymore. Foster homes are full. They're not taking any dogs anymore. So if you find a dog, you have the option, leave it there and leave the situation as it is, or take it in, and then you're stuck with it. People are fed up of it. And here in my neighbors, we are men, military families, so we're moving a lot. I'm here for a little more than a year. So I have to rely on what my neighbors are telling me who are living there for a decade. And only so know they say every year the same thing. Before Christmas, dogs get kicked out, that they can buy new puppies. And the situation is just getting out of hand. I had a gentleman stop outside of the road when we took the last dog in. Oh, I'm gonna shoot it. What solution is that? Shooting a dog on the road? I don't think it's legal in the first place, and second, it's not ethical at all. So in general, I think this also has a high impact on the community in terms of, we are not walking our dogs anymore, because they're too many strays out there. Other people don't want to go out anymore, you know, go walking, because the dogs are there. So it has a high impact on everybody. And it needs to be addressed by multiple entities. One is definitely law enforcement, and I know the sheriff's office is on it. But also, political entities have to be aware. Education has to be there. The shelters have to be involved and support it more, and definitely also the community. So we really have to do something about that, because some people are just violating laws, others have to pick it up and are stuck with it, and there's no solution. So I would like to call on everybody, and I have to work with one or all of you to address this problem in multiple entities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So we cannot comment, because it's not an agenda item, but action will be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four, Certificates of Completion and Awards.
I have none at this time.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Five, Extension Activity Reports of Handouts. And do y'all have anything each other like to say?
Well, we would like to just remind everybody that we're having our breakfast this morning down in Judge Jackson's conference room once court ends. I don't know that there was anything else. We appreciate all y'all's support throughout the year, so we're excited for the new year to start rolling in.
And everybody's invited. Anybody have any questions or comments? Think y'all have been working, fixing to get busier. Thank y'all. Okay. Agenda Item Number Six, Richfield-Jackson County Judge... So nine thirty, so nine thirty we'll come back to Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Seven, Richfield-Jackson County Judge, seven A, discuss and take action on reappointment of Ray Skaggs, Eddie Calendar, and Carlos Salazar to the E S D Number Three Board. They've all expressed an interest in staying on, and they've all done a good job, so...
They need to be there. They're good people.
Yes, they've done it. They've done a good job.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion that we reappoint Ray Skaggs, Eddie Calendar, and Carlos Salazar to E S D Number Three Board.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we reappoint the board on the E S D members, Ray Skaggs, Eddie Calendar, and Carlos Salazar. Is there any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've done that. So now we're moving to seven B, discuss and take action on accepting letter of resignation from Jeff Ochendears from E S D Number Five Board. And everybody got a copy, I put it in their box in the auditor's office.
Judge, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation of Jeff Ochendears from the E S D Five.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Martin, we accept Jeff Ochendears as a nation letter. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're going to seven C, discuss and take action on reappointment of Lino Orocha and appointments of Chris Orocha and David Ortiz to the E S D Five Board.
And Judge, so we got these, the information on these folks, and I talked to them, and they're willing to serve. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Lino Orocha and to appoint Chris Orocha and David Ortiz to the E S D Five Board. And Mr. Orocha and Mr. Ortiz are here this morning.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Fowles, we reappoint Lino Orocha and appoint Chris Orocha and David Ortiz to the E S D Five Board. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll square y'all in in just a second. Let's do seven D, discuss and take action on appointing John H. Burleson Jr. to the E S D Number Two Board.
Judge, I talked to Mr. Burleson, he's willing to serve. He's a former Houston Department...
Lieutenant Captain?
Senior Captain.
Senior Captain. And he's got a lot of experience with fire. I think he'll make an excellent addition to that board, obviously, he's president this morning. So I'll make a motion to appoint John H. Burleson Jr. to the E S D Number Two Board.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Wiley, we appoint John H. Burleson Jr. to the E S D Number Two Board. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So if y'all want to get sworn in this morning, just step up here, and we'll get y'all sworn Okay. I'll repeat it. When I say aye, y'all repeat y'all's name, and then when I say the duties of the office, then you say your particular board, which one you're gonna be on. So you raise your right hand in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas Oath of Office. I, Chris John Burleson, David Ortiz, do solemnly swear or affirm...
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
...of the Office of Commissioner...
Office of Commissioner, E S D Number Five.
E S D Number Five.
Okay. Of the State of Texas...
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...protect, preserve, and defend...
Protect, preserve, and defend.
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Appreciate it.
If y'all want, let's see ya. Get you these. If y'all want to come over here, come around, and the county clerk will help you get your sign. And I'll sign, and if y'all want copies...
Oh, I do not.
Seven inches. Seven inches. Seven inches. Seven inches. Oh. Three forty-seven going down.
Judge...
Yes.
When your secretary... She put him at E S D Number Two, E S Five.
Okay. Did you go for them?
She went down there. Yeah, that's her. No, both of those are the same person.
I'm sorry, I'm looking. I wanted to see if you were there.
David is at E S D Number Five.
Before we get out of here, Chris, okay? My problem.
Gary, do you want me to take a picture?
That's all right. Okay. We can go on to Agenda Item Number Eight. I have to wait for Commissioner Martin to get back before we take action, but we can let the sheriff explain. So Agenda Item Number Eight, Richfield-Jackson County Judge, Geon Stewart County Sheriff, discuss possible action on approving Lexi Pool service agreements for the Russell County Sheriff.
Thank you for agreeing.
Sheriff?
I have...
Are you here to do it?
Well, I'm gonna let the sheriff explain them all, but I do... He brought the contracts to me to review. This would go out of his software budget. I had counsel review the contract, so I'll let the sheriff explain what Lexi Pool is and what his goal is with them, but all looks fine on our end. So, Sheriff?
Well, Lexi Pool is, they're associated with academy, and they basically create policies for the jail and the sheriff's office, police departments, whatnot. And as y'all are going through policy change here, I need to update the policy in my office also with all the new statutory changes and everything else. I know where our policy is not completely in line. Well, after being involved with this policy, I understand that I don't have enough employees to design a policy, and by the time I did, it would be out of date already. This company will design my policy and keep it current in the future, which would prevent me from having an employee to do nothing but that. And an employee's gonna cost us a minimum of forty-some thousand dollars, I think annually they're gonna cost me about twenty-something. So I'd actually be economically feasible to have them oversee it than to hire somebody to keep up the policy in the future.
If they update the policy, does the Commissioner's Court have to approve it?
No, no. I have to.
You have to approve it.
They send it to me saying, we're requesting this policy change based on whatever. I review it. If I am not in agreement with it, I don't have to accept it. If I accept it, that's the one thing they do. They also send it out and make sure that every employee has read it, understands it, and sends them back a response to the policy change. So they actually keep all employees current with any policy with it.
And just for clarification, this is law enforcement policies, which are completely separate. There's hundreds of them, and the sheriff's policies right now, there's probably, I don't even know how many, but it's huge, and it's everything related to law enforcement that is completely separate from like an employee manual. This is more a law enforcement policy manual. And I believe, doesn't it have, because it's also academy training as well?
It's corrections, law enforcement policy, and training, annual training are covering all of them.
Okay.
And it's around twenty thousand dollars annually?
That's what I think it's gonna cost somewhere in the neighborhood of...
There's...
Thirty-something thousand dollars.
There's two different contracts. One contract is for the actual creation and update of all of the law enforcement policies. That total is twenty-two thousand, two eighty-four, forty-five. And that, it's based on the number of sworn officers that the sheriff has, and number of beds in the jail as well. So they're specific to our jail. And then the second agreement here...
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
...is for the police academy training. It's the police one, academy annual training, and again, it's based on the number of officers, and this one is seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and two cents.
So they can train completely off of the internet, or off...
Pretty much.
Okay.
Except for what few courses T-Cole still requires you to attend in person. Yes, they can do almost everything online.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, yes, so it is a one-year contract, and it would have to renew year after year. And this again would go in his software, computer software budget.
I think it's a good idea.
And you have that in your budget already?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Judge, and we approve the sheriff to contract with Lexi Pool service agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Wiley, that we agree both Lexi Pool master service agreements for the sheriff's office. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sheriff, if you don't mind, I'll take them to my office to make the copies for my office, give a copy to the county clerk, and then I'll give you the original, and you can send it off to Lexi.
Gotcha.
It's got the payment terms on there. I want to make sure we pay them accordingly.
Rebecca, you're up. Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine, Rebecca Scriven, permit and development director. Nine A, utility permit. A-one permit number seven oh four, Southern Springs Water Supply Corporation, Precinct Four. County Road 305, review and approve. And we can do A-two, permit number seven oh five, Southern Springs Water Supply Corporation, Precinct Four. It says county acres, but shouldn't that be country acres drive?
Should be country acres. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Permit number seven oh four is a proposal for a one-inch service, sorry. One-inch service line with a two-inch casing about a mile northwest of FM 539 on County Road 305 for a sixteen-acre tract on the northwest side of 305.
We're gonna take the two together? Can we approve them both at the same time?
Yes, they're both yours.
Okay.
And then for permit number seven oh five, it's on country acres drive. It's also a one-inch service line with a two-inch casing for, or proposed for. It's three thousand feet south of FM thirty-four, forty-two.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve permit number seven oh four and number seven oh five.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve permit number seven oh four and permit number seven oh five. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving right along to nine B, non-standard plats and variances. B-one, nine B-one, County Road 331, 1353, Precinct Two, Radicki, discuss and take action.
This variance request is, the property owner is requesting to divide out point nine of an acre. It is a variance request from our one-acre minimum in the regulations and a non-standard flat request. That's typical. She's trying to sell it for a rental reason, and she did work with my office to get it from point seven-five that they were trying to sell before they came to us and got it up to point nine. She can't get it up to anymore due to the way the structures and the driveways laid out in the property. They did receive a favorable recommendation from the committee and met all the requirements. Judge, I have this survey for y'all.
How large is the per tract?
It's five acres, but the way the structures are laid out, there is no way to get both the forty-acre, or I'm sorry, forty-foot road drainage to get to the portion of property that would be larger. And she does have a seller already interested and ready to break. Not like a buyer already interested.
Is there a baseball field?
No.
There's a shed. That's what they had to make it.
Yeah, it says cover, but some kind of shed, and then the...
Got a tree and a T-post, and are they using those for boundary markers?
The road actually goes on the outside of that fence. She's not wanting to move her road. So that's why they put the fence like that.
Okay.
She'd have to move her road, move her driveway to gain more than the point nine acres.
Is this approved by the committee?
Yes.
I made a motion, Judge, that we approve County Road 331, thirteen fifty-three, County Road 331, a variance.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Perdola, we approve the variance at thirteen fifty-three, County Road 331. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving to nine B-two, FM thirteen forty-seven, twelve seven twenty-five, Precinct Three, Losine, discuss and take action.
Please get your board.
The survey's being passed down, but Mr. Losine proposing to cut out two acres from his two-hundred-acre tract. He does already have a buyer, all utility services and tech stock was currently in place, so they did receive approval, and it received a favorable recommendation from the committee.
And they got approval from tech stock, you said?
Yes, there's already an existing driveway.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve FM thirteen forty-seven, twelve seven twenty-five, Losine, as presented.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Perdola, we approve the... The variance at FM, twelve seven twenty-five, FM thirteen forty-seven. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's Cody Losine's house.
Yeah.
Colton Westmore. They bought it, they did this done, they're trying to get everything done. They had an interest rate they set. Stepping in.
He is a character.
We're moving to nine C subdivision, Fadera Ridge subdivision amended plat. Nine C-one, review and approve final plat and discuss and take action.
So, the Fadera Ridge subdivision...
What is Fadera Ridge subdivision?
Three twenty.
Three twenty.
One eighty-one and three twenty.
Okay.
Part of town here.
So this is an amended plat for the Fadera Ridge subdivision. There's a request, there's... They applied to submit an amended plat for drainage corrections to the lots. There was a change in culvert location from between lot one and fifty on the original plat, and they corrected it to between lots four and forty-seven. And also adding in eight-foot utility easement on which lot?
Lot twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yes.
That is just to help the utility company service their bowls.
The correction was needed due to when they were out there working, leaving the dirt and everything, they saw that there was a low spot and the water was gonna be held and not flow as it did on the original plat, so this is an amendment to the drainage for that, correcting the problem that would happen.
Take it back up here. Take this. This one, take this one this way. There's nothing. But they...
No.
These are the lots.
Here.
It doesn't tie against. You can't go out the back and break all the layers.
No.
Okay.
And they didn't need all the requirements, so they received a favorable recommendation.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the final plat. Approve the final plat for...
But there's the amended plat.
But I want to be noted, Judge, as commissioner, I still have concerns about them dumping the water onto the people next door on lots five, eight, and seven.
And three. A lot of water's coming out on the corners of lot three and lot five.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. You made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
You seconded the motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Fowles, second by Commissioner Perdola, we approve the plat, but even though with the mention of that, always do is, hey, we brought your attention on the...
Our engineers approved it, so...
And engineers approved it, so it's going. Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yep.
We're gonna go back.
Another item.
Oh, you're welcome to stand up here.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. You made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
You seconded the motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Foll, second by Commissioner Perdola. We approve the plat, but even though we have mentioned that, all is good. So, hey, we brought your attention, but on the...
Our engineers approved it, so.
Okay, and engineers approved it, so it's going. Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna go back. Oh, you're welcome to stand up here. Okay. It is 9:32. We are going back to agenda item number 6. Richard L. Jackson County Judge at 9:30, we're gonna open the bids for material hauling, material plus hauling. So... What's that?
Yes.
Any motion?
I'll make the motion to open the bids.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Foll to open the bids. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I believe I have a total of eight. And again, this is for flexible base and asphalt material. The first one is from Texas Materials Group. I'm sorry?
Where are we?
Texas Materials Group is out of Cedar Park, Texas.
Everyone announced that we're just gonna open the bids and...
Yes, we'll just open the bids and after today, we'll go back and do the bid tabulation, and then we hope to bring it to Commissioners' Court on the 27th for your consideration of awarding.
Can't we wait till January?
The next one is 181 Materials out of Coates, Texas. 9O Transport and Sales out of Three Rivers, Texas. GEM Materials, I'm sorry, G E M Materials out of Selma, Texas. Bron Text Material out of New Braunfels, Texas. Triple Field. Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions, Austin, Texas. Colorado Materials, San Marcos. And the last one. Adiscosa Materials out of Pleasanton, Texas. And we will have the bid tab ready for you sometime this week.
Does anybody need to contact the county? Anybody needs to contact the officer's office about that? Feel free. Okay, so, we'll know more in two weeks. So, now, Edwin. Agenda item 10, Edwin Baker, Fire Marshal, EMC Health and Public Safety, 10A. Discuss and approve adopting the burn ban.
It worked again. We don't have to do it. We're down in the mid-300s, which we need to be at 550-ish to look at it or think that we're gonna be there. And it'll be after the 1st of the year before we'll be eligible for a burn ban. And without the burn ban...
You can't do the fireworks.
The fireworks, without being put on burn ban, it doesn't... I would say we shouldn't put on fireworks restrictions because, once again, it needs to be at 575 or within the next two, three weeks by the 1st, and we're not gonna be anywhere near there. It'll be after the 1st before we, even if we start getting the dry fronts that come through and the freeze.
Well, I was trying to say, what if we get a freeze and it finally does kill them? Just tickle the deer, we still got green grass out there.
Right. You know, if it's bad enough, we can do an emergency declaration like we did last year.
Yeah.
But it's pretty specific in the rules. I think I sent you all that here a couple of weeks ago. But it says that if you're going to be at 575 during the fireworks season, this fireworks season, you can restrict the certain fireworks, the skyrockets and the missiles. But that's when it says you can restrict them. And we're not gonna be anywhere near that, because we're 200 below that plus. So, if it went down 10 a day, it'd still take 20 days to get us there. And 20 days will put us into January. And with moisture like this morning, if that holds true off and on from now to the end of the year, we won't even get close to it. The good part is we got some rain.
Yes.
Some areas got a little bit more than they wanted.
Some got more than others.
And some of us got four tacks.
Yeah.
Some of us live better.
But your roads didn't get washed out.
No, they didn't.
So, we can't do anything with these fireworks?
I wouldn't advise doing anything with it, you know, because we're so far down. If we were a little closer, it'd be different. We were, last week when I was watching it before this rain hit, we were in that area, that gray area where it was worth serious consideration on whether we did it or not. It doesn't mean we'd make that 575. We would've been close to it. And, you know, by now, we should've had threes, and we have.
Yeah, thank God we haven't had it. It's getting close. While you're standing up there, okay, since we're probably not gonna, we're not gonna take any action on the burn ban, let's do 10B, discuss and approve adopting restrictions of certain fireworks classified under 49 CFR Section 173.100R2. Okay, 10-1-86 Edition has skyrocketous with sticks and missiles with fins. Okay, and then you're also advising that we can't do that since we're...
Well, I'm not gonna say you can't, court can do whatever it wants to. I'm just advising you don't do it, because that kinda draws in lawsuits. You know, that years ago, when we banned, did an emergency declaration and banned all fireworks, it didn't, even though we, everybody had a legitimate reason to do that and the law behind them, there still were several lawsuits. Wilson County was not named in them, but the bigger counties were. And now, they won the lawsuit, but it became a lawsuit, because somebody has to mess with that.
The disaster declaration is a lot more restrictive...
Yes.
Than just the firework ban. Firework ban does not ban all aerial fireworks.
No. In fact, the only ones that I think that it bans that really do some good are the bottle rockets, because they tend to do those by hand instead of bottles like they're supposed to. And, but the, you know, you still got the rolling candles, you got the big ball fireworks with up to 500 grams of powder in them, and, you know, and it just, those are even bigger and cause just as much threat. But like I say, the difference is in bottle rockets, you can hold it in your hand and throw it out in the dry field.
And the disaster declaration, it also bans sales.
Yes, it would ban the sales at that point.
And that, some people count on that income that time of year.
You are correct. We have three private stands in our county. In other words, it's citizens that live in our county that own these stands and count on that for money. It's extra money, but they count on that for extra money every year. And then we have Calamo and Mr. W., well, we got four, because we still have the big one north of town. That's an independent, so to speak. The guy who runs it lives in the county, but the guy who owns it lives in Houston. And so, you know, that's where we're at on it. I mean, it's entirely up to y'all where y'all wanna go with it, but my recommendation is we just leave it alone.
I'm good with that. Everybody else?
I'm sending everybody up on County Road 352. They shoot all the fireworks they want. It's wet.
352, 347?
Yeah.
Okay, so actually, no action taken on 10A and B? Thank you, Edwin. Okay, moving right along to agenda item 11, Eva S. Martinez, County Attorney.
Yes, sir. I have handed those down. They have been properly reviewed by our Assistant County Attorney and himself.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Foll, second by Commissioner Perdola. We approve the minutes of preceding November 14, November 17, and November 28. Is there any questions, comments, additions, additions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so we have approved them. Okay, moving right along to agenda item 12. Jalen T. Bautter from Human Resource Specialist.
I guess I'll take one of the team, because she's having fun, yeah. Resignations, terminations. Joseph Sears resigned from his position as a foreman for Precinct 3 effective December 1st, 2022. Michelle Key resigned from her position as grants coordinator with the Auditor's Office effective December 2nd, 2022. Amanda Foreman was terminated from her position as a customer service specialist with the Tax Office effective December 2nd, 2022. Elizabeth Silva resigned from her position as the jail administrator with the Sheriff's Department effective December 9th, 2022. Retirement. John Lynn is retired as foreman for Precinct 4 effective December 31st, 2022, with 35 years of service to Wilson County.
Thank you.
There's a note on John, just to, in general, that there's been a Lynn who's served in Wilson County Precinct 4 since the 30s. Through John, his grandfather, his father before he moved into Precinct 3. And John's been there 35 years.
You can't find another Lynn?
No, don't think so.
John's been in Rhode and Bridge, Precinct 4 for the last 35 years, same position?
Yes. I think since he got out of high school, wasn't he? He's there.
Yeah, and his dad was there before him, but redistricting, redistrict them out of Precinct 4.
I think there might've been a time where all three of them were in Precinct 4 briefly.
Yes, I think.
Be really close to that.
And Bobby and John old. Okay. We've got that, so now it's really your turn.
Yeah.
Agenda item 13, Brenda Altrino, County Auditor, bills.
Yes, so I've got $497,128.92 that I've reviewed and approved.
Second one?
Yes.
God, if we keep doing that, are we going out of line?
No, fortunately, these are regular stuff.
Takes a lot of money to make this whole world go round.
It does.
They're getting ain't cheaper.
Not at all.
Oh, yes, I talked to him about it, yes. Well, yeah, I thought it was gonna be... I guess he didn't talk to you. I talked to him last week.
So, I have one more, it's an estimate, it's not an actual bill yet that's not included in there because I didn't have your review for it yet. But this comes from Edwin Baker. Edwin's back there in the corner. He purchased a truck for civil preparedness out of the Civil Preparedness Fund. I don't know, two months, couple months, two months ago, I think. And he has presented an invoice or an estimate to get that vehicle outfitted out of the Civil Preparedness Fund. And it did not get onto the agenda as a separate line item, so I asked Judge if I could include it in my line item for payment, for approval for payment. The total for outfitting that vehicle is $16,111.62 to be paid out of the Civil Preparedness Fund, which there more than sufficient funds in there. But the vehicle does need it in order for it to be operable.
What kind of vehicle is it?
It's a 2022 Dodge pickup. We already bought the vehicle. I just need to get it outfitted with... I found myself out of wrecks and other calls with no emergency lights, put my flappers on it. It's something, no radios in it. Right now, it's just a plain pickup with markings, nothing in it other than the normal stuff that comes in a pickup.
Is that the white one with the red lettering on it?
Yes, sir.
And we do have that money budgeted, budgeted for that, and it works out good, Judge, because the vehicle was actually purchased last, in last fiscal year's budget. And so, we still have the money budgeted, which can, will be used to pay for this. But I didn't, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it before I process it.
Who will be driving this vehicle?
Who's driving the vehicle?
It'll be me. Yeah, my Tahoe, I was in the shop here a couple of weeks ago. I was planning on just using it to, doing the markings and stuff like we're proposing here, but driving that Tahoe until it went out, and it's got over 200,000 miles on it. And the last time I had it in the shop, I think it came out to about $1,500, $1,600 worth of work done on it. I drove it to the office, and the light came back on, took it back over there. They did some more work on it, and before I got home that evening, the light came back on. And I had, I just parked it. It's make, the lifters are gone in it. They're just, it runs, but it's on its last leg. They said they don't have any hope for it other than replacing an engine, which it costs probably anywhere from $7,000 to $10,000 today.
This is off of last year's budget or...
No, this will be in this year's budget, which is our... No, this will be in this year's budget, which it's already budgeted.
Okay.
The vehicle was purchased in last year's.
But still, like Maggie Gibson, it's all come out.
It's all, it's in one fund.
And that's just one fund?
Yeah. Completely separate from the general fund, it's a rollover fund anyway, so.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so if you would, when you consider approval of the bills, if you would include this one as well.
The red eagle.
It's from Alamo Fire Apparatus, I think.
Did that come from something like rent money we, no?
No.
No, this is completely separate.
What is the total on that?
Sixteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-two cents. And now this won't be paid until it's completed, so it's not going to change the number on your total dollar amount of the invoices presented before you.
But that money will come out of the emergency preparedness?
Yes, sir. Correct.
So one motion is two.
And you could just be one motion with the inclusion of the estimate from Alamo Fire Apparatus.
I'm gonna approve the bills, including estimates from Alamo Fire to, I'll pick the E M C trucks for sixteen thousand dollars and some change.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we approve the bills, including the bill for the outfitting of the emergency management vehicle. Is there any more questions, additions, deletions, changes? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So.
Did we get John's old satisfied?
Oh, yeah, they came, yeah, I went ahead and processed their payment, they came by and picked it up.
Okay, we haven't missed anything. Agenda Item Number fourteen, at nine fifty-four, we are adjourned. Don't forget about going downstairs into the